Ladies and gentlemen, please rise for the pledge. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call out the order of the regular meeting for May 14th. Board of Alderman, give the roll call, please.
Alderman King. Alderman Stone.
Here.
Alderman Trapp.
Here.
Alderman Capara.
Here.
Present.
Alderman Philopone.
Here.
Alderman Dentson.
Here.
Alderman Chislydis.
Here.
Alderman Yaman.
Here.
Alderman Rivers.
Here.
Alderman O'Brien.
Here.
Alderman Schuer.
Here.
Alderman Blackwell.
Here.
Alderman DeLibro.
Here.
Ten thousand and four absent.
Declare a quorum. Can I have a motion to add to the agenda, late communication number one, please?
Don't move.
Mr. Castile, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Consideration of previous minutes, can I have a motion to accept previous minutes? Mr. Rivers, seconded by Mr. Cassetti. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any discussion?
That means all the special meetings and everything that we had, I think, three or four.
I have all the dates, do you want me to read them?
I just want to make sure we accept those minutes.
So we can read the dates, please.
April 9th, full board meeting, April 9th, public hearing on ordinance, and April 9th, special meeting, April 23rd, special meeting.
Motion to approve those minutes. Mr. Cassetti, seconded by Mr. Rivers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, thank you, gentlemen. Tonight we have a presentation, I'm sorry, a public session. Will anyone from the public wish to speak? Will anyone from, yes, please come forward, name and address for the record, please.
Hello, good evening. Dawn Margalon, 39 Hallbrook Street. So I approached the mayor last week regarding what to do with, or possibly what to do with the property, the old tech school property. I know it's lying vacant right now, and there's been so many ideas thrown out there. The idea that I propose is a dog park. Ansonia does not have a dog park. It's currently lying vacant, there is water accessible for the dogs. It has almost three full sides already fenced in. The mayor did say that he can probably get the third side and the little section in the back donated for fencing. And then, I'm not sure what we would do for parking, that would be up for discussion later. But there's many people who walk their dogs all hours of the day and night, big dogs, small dogs. We have here in Ansonia, a lot of dog lovers, a lot of apartment owners, and very small properties. There's really nowhere for our dogs to run free. We can access the Ansonia Walk on the river, however, you have to have your dogs leashed. And it's a very short walk, and there is also no parking over there. So if you're going, if you are going to walk your dog on that walk, you do have to walk from your home, or park downtown here, walk to the walk. So I just think it would be more accessible to more people in Ansonia to have a lot, a small lot there, and then just to have maybe a small fenced-in area for smaller dogs, or dogs that are a little more timid, and then a larger fenced-in area for larger dogs, dogs that would like to socialize a little bit more. Then you have the running water there, we can put up a few posts for bags, you know, make it very clear that dog owners need to pick up after their dogs, be very mindful of how their dogs are behaving with other dogs within the park, and, you know, just keep it well monitored. We travel for, we have two big dogs, we have a 45-pound Husky and 130-pound White Shepherd. So we go to other dog parks in the area. There's a huge dog park in Shell End, which is not ideal, it's kind of gross, actually. And then there's the small dog park over on Coon Hollow that we go to all the time, but it's, it's in Derby. You know, we want some, we want to bring something home, you know, we want to bring it to our community, keep things in our community. So that's my proposal.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
It's an excellent idea. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Will anyone else from the public wish to speak? Please come forward, name and address for the record, please. Gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, please, let our comments to three minutes tonight, we have a full house here, thank you.
My name is Everett Adamowski, I'm here tonight representing the Eagle Hoes Ansonia Fire Department, this is Captain Mark Nimmens, also from the Eagle Hoes. We had sent in a letter, has anybody had this given to them? If not, I'll pass this one around, you guys can read it, look at the picture. The Eagle Hoes is asking the City of Ansonia to grant us the right-of-way and use of property for the little section of area to the right side of number one Main Street, which is our firehouse, for as long as it remains a firehouse in the city. We will maintain the property as far as cutting the grass and all the, you know, small minor upkeep. If you drive by it now, you can probably see that it's, it's all overgrown, it's quite the mess. So, we're asking the board if we can just have the, you know, right-of-way use of this property. We will clean it up, we plan on possibly putting a little monument there for the deceased fireman from the Eagle Hoes, and obviously, we will, you know, paint the flagpole and put flags up there, if you can get us the City of Ansonia one, that would be great. Do you have any real staff? Does anybody have any questions for us?
Sounds good.
Do you need a motion for, for something like that?
We have it, it's on resolution two on your agenda, I'm not sure how you guys want to take that up, but I just wanted to speak in public session, in case anybody had any questions of me, I can address them now, because I know once the public session closes, I wouldn't be able to speak.
Any questions for the chief?
No.
Or former chief?
Past.
Past chief.
Retired.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Will anyone else from the public wish to speak? Yes, please come forward, please.
I'm Rob Seraphinowitz, my office address is 29 Fifth Street, Stamford, Connecticut. I'm here on behalf, I represent Frank Heiser and Frank's LLC. I submitted a letter dated the 8th of May to the Board of Alderman in relation to what we feel are some issues with a bid that was submitted related to the police contract. You people have much to do, I have nothing more to say than I rest on that letter. Thank you.
Thank you. Will anyone else from the public wish to speak? Will anyone else from the public wish to speak? Third and final call, would anyone else from the public wish to speak tonight? Does anybody have their hand up behind the board? No? Seeing that, hearing that, public session's closed. Tonight we have the distinguished Rick Dunn from the Nagatuck Valley Council on Governments, Executive Director, and John DeCarlo from, also from NVCOG, regarding Phase One of the regional water, wastewater treatment consolidation study. Mr. DeCarlo, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, good evening, everyone. I am John DeCarlo, Municipal Shared Services Director for Nagatuck Valley Council of Governments, I'm also Project Manager for Nagatuck Valley Council of Governments Regional Wastewater Treatment Consolidation Study. With me this evening, as Chair pointed out, is Rick Dunn, Executive Director for NVCOG, and Mario Francucci, who is Senior Project Manager for Black and Beach, who is the project consultant. We are doing a roadshow of going to every one of the legislative bodies in the five communities, we're studying plans to update you on Phase One, any questions you may have, and this is the fourth of the five presentations, I'll turn it over to Rick to start.
Thank you to Board President DeCaro, members of the board, appreciate the time tonight, we'll make this as quick as possible, get to questions if you have any. I apologize to members of the audience for the boards, we'll get them out of your way. All of these are just excerpts from the report, I think we gave you full copies of the report as well as the executive summaries. The report itself is available at nvcoct.org, as of tomorrow, nvcoct.gov, but it's there under Reports and Studies, so anybody can get a full copy. So, we're here to update you, we're at the end of Phase One in this project, and I wanted to take this time to just get out to all of the legislative bodies and, and update you on, on where we are. The, the study itself has been funded by the State Office of Policy and Management. It is a voluntary study, so there were five towns that participated, Nagatuck, Beacon Falls, Seymour, Ansonia, and Derby. Those towns have decided to, to look forward and try and look at regional solutions to both operations and capital costs. So these five plants, I should say, five systems, all have some degree of, of need in terms of how they're structured, in terms of how they're, they've been looked after over the years. Now, Ansonia's a little different, you have a relatively new plant, just a few years old, as you know, the collection system is much older, you've experienced some problems recently. Almost every town has that same issue with the collection system. What is underground is very, very old in most cases, in many cases, more than 100 years old. So we're, we've looked at that in the Phase One study, as you can see from, from the report, there's more than $250 million worth of improvements over the next 20 years that are needed in all, all five of these plants. Our goal was to look at these costs, particularly the capital costs, and determine whether there was a likelihood of savings through regionalization. The idea is to save the taxpayers' money, the ratepayers' money, those are, those are our main goals. The taxpayers, not just locally, the state picks up a big chunk of this bill, they reimburse the towns for the capital cost, for the debt service, and a percentage of those investments over time. So, it's known as a clean water fund, and there's a relatively long wait for those dollars, usually it could be as long as 10 years before you get on the list. Most of these towns through, in some way, shape, or form, I won't use the word violation because I get in trouble for, for using that word, but are not up to snuff, whether it's the plant, or the collection system, or some other aspect of their operation. Might not be on a daily basis, but it could be peak flows, especially with the infiltration of rainwater and other, other contaminants into the system. So, we've looked at this, we've looked at it in, in this Phase One analysis, the report, if you go through it, it's pretty detailed, it's a pretty high-level planning document, and it outlines item by item what is wrong with the system, with, with each system. We've, Mario will go through, the engineer will go through all of the options that they've looked at, and what we're going to narrow them down into. Basically, we've created in Phase One a base case for every town, which is a go-it-alone scenario. If every town goes it alone over the next 20 years, what's the estimate of those costs? It gives us a basis to compare each town in Phase Two toward, to compare each town to a regional solution, a regionalized solution, which Black and Beach will, will come up with in the second phase. So as they go through that second phase, and they, they develop those regional scenarios, and Mario will show you, there's a bunch of them, they'll compare that against those costs. It'll ultimately be up to each of you to make that decision, though. Any town, if they choose to opt out of this study at any point, can get out, you have no commitment. You have no commitment to this process until you decide you want to be in. And if, if you decide you want out, no harm, no foul, you go on your own. The other thing that we're doing in Phase Two, when we move on to this, it'll be an initial process to get from a long list of options to a short list of options, those will, those will be the ones we'll evaluate. From there, it'll actually be a, a formal permit process, DEEP will get involved, and it'll be an environmental impact evaluation from that point on, so it's a formal process, recorded decision will be, will be entered. Still, there's no commitment from the towns, but hopefully, we'll have some regional options, whether it's two or three towns, or two or three options at that point. We'll also, in Phase Two, do a governance study, so that'll be a recommendation on model regulations, and the items that we'll, we'll look at will be, how would a regional system be governed, it'll depend on how many towns are in, what the governance model would be, how it would operate, how rate setting would be handled, things of that nature. Also, we'll have to look at other items, bargaining unit agreements, contracts, things like that, if, if there's going to be any sort of consolidation of systems. Now, that may not be the option that gets recommended, but those will be the things we'll look at in Phase Two, if those are among the recommendations. With that, because we, we always promise to move these things along as quickly as possible, I'm going to introduce Mario. Mario Francucci is with Black and Beach, he's the third-party consultant working for the COG on this study. Mario's developed all of the scenarios you're looking at, and he'll go through quickly how we did this, what the options are, and what we're going to move on to in Phase Two. Thank you, Mario.
All right, well, really briefly, just to touch on some of the things that Rick said, the end goal of the wastewater regionalization study is to determine whether regionalization makes sense, it needs to make sense from a cost perspective, it needs to make sense from just a technical perspective, and it needs to make sense to you with all the other decisions that you'll be bringing, bringing to the table. And so that, that's the goal, that's, that's the ultimate goal, and as Rick said, it could either be one plant, or it could be multiple plants, but it won't be five plants, because that's what's, what's there now, okay? So what we've done is, in Phase One, going from the back of the study to where, what we've done is, we've created, as Rick said, we've studied each one, each one of the wastewater systems for the five communities. Here for Ansonia, we've, we've reviewed the data for the plant, and we've reviewed the data for the collection system. I think you know that there's not a lot in the collection system that's current, but we've done the best we could in determining the, the condition of the, the condition, condition of the collection system, the condition of the plant, and the condition, the condition of the pumping stations that, that pump, that pump to the plant. So those are the three components that we've studied. And the plant, as you know, had received a major upgrade in 2011. Of the five communities, no doubt, is that the plant here is in the best condition. And, and the plant manager that we've, are indebted to for a lot of the information that he's provided to us, is running the plant and, and keeping it in very nice condition. I wouldn't say it wasn't true, I haven't been saying that to the other communities, but in this community, it is the truth. So, but yet, that plant is, is getting old, it's 2011, it's soon to be 10 years old, and, and there's an awful lot of rotating equipment at these plants, we all own automobiles, we know how much rotating engines, you know, will kind of wear and tear, wastewater treatment plants, it's the same thing, maybe even worse, because it's, it's not just water that goes into those pipes, but a lot of grit and things that rotating equipment wear out on. So, you know, what we've done is, with, as Rick said, we're looking at a 20-year cycle for this pro, for this project, we're not looking just for today, it needs to, what is the plan for 20 years, all the way to 24. So, we're, we're projecting that, by about that time, the plant will start to need improvements that we've targeted $15 million. There's so much mechanical equipment there, is it all going to break down at the same time? Absolutely not. But you've already, you're already, we've been in contact with Brian at the plant, and he's already replacing some equipment now, and that's just the nature of, of, of those type of factories, because they're really, that's what they are, they're wastewater treatment plants, but they really are a factory, they, they're, they're producing a clean water treatment plant. And so, we've targeted that as, as part of the, the work so far for the collection system, we've, we've, it's, it's, it's an old system, you know, you need to hear that from me, and it's, and it's a leaky system. You know, I know that you're addressing those things already, but we've targeted work to be done over 20 years for the collection system there as well, and those are indicated in, in your reports and on this table, and also for the pump station. So, we're targeting somewhere in the order of about $30 million for the City of Ansonia, and these are just targets right now for, for the next 20 years. In Phase Two, we're going to study that a little further, because what we're going to be doing is, we're going to be comparing regionalization to what you're doing right now, which is handling what you're doing on your own. We need to have a good idea about what you're doing on your own, or else when we start comparing regionalization, we're not going to be very well-grounded. So, we need to have a good, good sense here. And we've come up with this, so we've done that in terms of Phase One, we've come up with a base case, we've identified the needs of the systems, the needs of the, of the Ansonia systems, plant, collection system, and pump stations, and we've assigned a cost to that. We've also, as part of Phase One, we've also identified a whole list of, of regionalization alternatives. I believe that they are all doable, but we want to find the better ones, we want to find the best ones, that's, that's the challenge. And, and what we've done is, we've left, there, there is, we've left no stone unturned, everything is on the table, and sometimes you're, people want to rush to judgment, oh, that doesn't make sense, so it doesn't make sense. All of the, everybody in our, everybody in this room kind of knows what we're talking about. We said, we're going to, we're going to be very open-minded, everything is on the table. And so, what we've got is, we've got 12 alternatives, but really a couple, a number of these are paired, you've got a 3, and a 3A, and a 2, and a 2A. The A alternatives represent alternatives where we're providing even greater amount of I and I control infiltration and inflow control. That's going to make the capital facilities at the treatment plant and at the pump stations smaller, which means less dollars. However, to do that, to do that aggressive I and I is also expensive, so you need to find the right balance. How much do you remove of I and I and still not break the bank to, to put in the bigger facilities at the treatment plant? So, we're going to be looking at all of those, those alternatives, but some of these that we've got for Ansonia, of course, and so I know that some, some of this has already been reviewed, but we're reviewing it anew, we're looking at, you know, for instance, the Derby plant coming to Ansonia, we're also looking at the complete opposite, Ansonia going to Derby, and some of you might say, does that make sense? We don't know that yet, until we look at all the factors in Phase Two, we're not going to know that. And again, we're not looking at it today, we're, we have to, it's difficult, even for me, to remember that this is a 20-year period, what doesn't necessarily make sense today may make sense in 10 years, 15 years, or 20 years. So, we need to be disciplined and persevere in looking at that whole cycle and not rush to judgment, and that, that starts with us first, because if we don't, if we don't do that, we can't, we can't transmit that to others. So, we've got a number of alternatives, we, we're looking at those in Phase Two, what we will do in Phase Two is, we will try to shrink this group in a very transparent mode, to come up with a smaller group, and then to get into those, that smaller group, and really shake it up, really look at it hard, look at all the criteria, get you folks involved, your representatives involved, and basically come up with that, with those alternatives that make the most sense for regionalization, if they occur, if they do exist at all. I ask, do you have, do you have a city right now any questions? We'll be briefly, if you have workshops in Phase One, or continue to have workshops in Phase Two.
The next step is going to be a scoping meeting with, who work with WPCA operators and the mayor's offices, and personnel of the five towns, we'll start to scope Phase Two, and then we'll take it to DEEP from there. Happy to answer any questions. Would you, Lord Eppen?
I got, I got a couple of questions. Wouldn't it be advantageous for us to have Derby come to us, rather than have them rebuild their whole station? I mean, we got two 400,000-gallon vats that are empty at the treatment plant.
It's, it's hard for me not to prejudge the process either, because I live here as well, it makes sense to me.
Well, they're going to need a lot of I and I work done in Derby.
So, I, I think the shortest, and I'll, I will let Mario answer, I think the shortest answer that I've learned is that, right now, today, you can't combine Ansonia and Derby, because with the stormwater that's infiltrating both systems, there's not enough capacity to.
Well, Ansonia did I and I back in 2006, I mean, they didn't do all of it, but they still need more to do, and that's what I'm looking into with a capital plan for the city, but Derby's going to need a lot of it.
Yeah, there's a substantial amount of I and I, more in Derby than in Ansonia, but Ansonia still has quite a bit. So, I mean, I, I think the numbers are in the report, in terms of the peak flow.
Are there numbers on how much for Derby and how much for Ansonia? Do you have that?
It's in our report.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, but combined, they wouldn't be able to face a rainy day, I mean, just the Ansonia plant, for the current collection system. That's, so if, if that were one of the solutions, there'd be, would have to be a large investment in, in the collection systems to prevent infill.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, especially in Derby.
That's where the investment would be.
How long before the evaluation is done?
So we're on an 18-month study, we're six months into it, we allow six months for Phase One and 12 months for Phase Two, because we do lose some control in Phase Two once it becomes a, a state permit process, but we think it'll be on schedule, we think it'll be about a year from now when we'll wrap everything up.
Thank you, thank you. Any other questions, gentlemen? Mr. Stoughton?
We have a study going on on our own, which you must know this, and at the last meeting, they mentioned something about if we invested $300,000 a year, then in 10 years we would have pretty much all of our piping redone, taken out and changed, whatever. Now, in that 10-year period, you probably won't be finished yet. So, what do we, because it would be, I mean, in our honesty, looking at it business-wise, it would be silly not to address that, when you have the opportunity to have a low figure, to me, that was a low figure, to be able to bring your, enhance your, your plant and your, your lines. Be foolish on our part to ignore that.
So, so if you're talking about just the collection system, that's, that's a very low figure, I, I mean, our report.
Is actually higher.
Yeah, our report recommends $800,000 over, over the first five years each, to catch you up, and then one, is it 1% after that?
It goes, it goes to a one-half.
Yeah. So, so, it's based on, we base it on, you want to talk about it?
Yeah, basically, the collection system, the collection system, you're right, to fit it, doesn't make sense to address your collection system, absolutely, it's your system, the more end up, and so, so to do it the way you said was also the way to do it, is to stay after it, and don't rip up every street in town all at the same time, but let's address them very strategically, very deliberately, let's have a plan, and let's stay with the plan. First thing that needs to be done is what I'm reading, some, some of the latest newspaper article, we're going to do a study, we're going to define what the wastewater flows really are in all of the sub-areas, and we're going to identify the, all of the problem areas, and then we're going to prioritize those problem areas, and we're going to address those first. And, and, and then you will just take them in order of priority. What the costs are, right now, we don't know, we've assigned certain unit costs, and we know that we've, you've got 345,000 millennial feet of sewers in town, and a great majority of them are vitrified clay pipe, which is great pipe, but very bad joints. They last for a long time, these pipes are, that's why you've got them, many other communities have the, have the same type pipes, they're great pipes, they have leaky joints, and it's the rainwater that goes in them, that basically ends up at the wastewater treatment plant, causes havoc in the plant, and, and I'm not saying that, that it does any time, but it leads to violations. And so on Blue Sky Day, like the mayor said, yeah, we can take Derby, and Derby can take you, but most of the days, there's a lot of days that are not Blue Sky Days, and, and when that rain comes, that's when, that's when these systems get challenged. But yeah, I think the collection, the reason to address the collection system is certainly to address the I and I, but also to rehabilitate the system, because even though, as I said at the beginning, this vitrified clay pipe is a very long-lasting pipe, it has life too. Everything does, and, and in this case, in most cases, like in your community, some of that pipe has been, a lot of that pipe has been, grown 50, 60, 70, 80, 90 years. So it's, 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 I believe, it's useless. I hold my hands at some point, you're saying it's, it's, it's not an easy, easy matter, but.
Well, I hope, I would hope, and I'm sure the mayor feels the same way, we both have background in this type of work, that if we do decide a capital plan or some kind of progress, that you keep in touch with us, with where you're going and what we're doing to make sure that what we do doesn't slow down or hurt the, the regionalization part of this, because we do want regionalization.
Mr. President, if I may just continue to answer, so the, the, we've run into this in other towns, there are other towns with serious notices of violation. There are other towns with serious notices of violation against them, and you have a regulator, on the one hand, holding them back from making additional investments right now, where they want them to wait until we complete the study, because the state's gonna be on the hook for any of the improvements they make. On the other hand, they're whipping them, because they're, they have violations that are outstanding, and they're, they're in violation of the law. So they, many towns are in this situation where, where they're, they have two competing interests, and we're trying to move as quickly as possible to give the answers so the towns can, can consider those answers in their decision-making. But, one of the things that I wanted to touch on quickly is if you, everybody's gonna have to invest in their collection systems regardless of what the planning solution's off, because the collection systems are gonna be that they're gonna have to move wastewater to a plant, no matter where that plant ends up being, or a combination of plants end up being. The thing that you have to keep in mind is, if there's a regional solution at some point, say for the sake of argument, Beacon Falls, Seymour, Ansonia, Derby join together to run a single operation, maybe two plants, maybe one plant, and they go, move to join together, somehow the, the ratepayers who've invested in those systems have to have their, their investments equalized to enter into a single system. Ansonia's made a huge investment in plant and, and system, and Derby is not, and Seymour's maintained status quo, but, and has a plant that meets their operating permit, but barely, and Beacon Falls has one that just meets their needs, but not anything more than that, but they have a relatively new collection system of flat. The question is, how do you equalize all those investments to, to enter into a regional system? Not to mention how much money each has in the bank. So, all those questions have to be answered in order to get to the next step. And that's one of the things you'll have to be able to answer once we figure out if the plants can be brought, if the operations can be brought. So all of those have to be considerations. You all need to be thinking forward about as we reach this process, as in the victims, because ultimately, you, as I said at the beginning, you have to make decisions.
So this needs to make sense, technically, this needs to make sense from a cost basis and then on an equity basis. And yes, to answer your question, we would definitely be staying in touch. We've done that already with the, with folks at the plant and people that report, that report up to them. We intend to do that with you, but we said that we wanted to give an even better sense, a better, stronger, more true sense of the needs of the, of the, not only Derby system, but Ansonia's wastewater plant, Ansonia's collection system. So if you have that information, we would definitely be staying in touch.
Well, you said early on, the goal is to save the ratepayers and the taxpayers' money, so that works for us as well.
Yep. We're trying to find out if we can do that.
If it doesn't make, if it doesn't do that, it's gonna have to be some other compelling reason to do this, that I can't think of right now.
Right. Any other questions, gentlemen?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's all the official session. Mayor Cassetti?
Good evening, President Vaccaro, members of the Board of Aldermen, city staff, and residents of the great city of Ansonia. I want to draw to your attention some important dates to remember. I want to let this board know that I will be holding a special meeting next Wednesday with the Board of Apportionment and Taxation to go over the details of my proposed budget. As you know, I have made and continue to make the taxpayers and residents of this city a priority while preserving and maintaining city services in a way that is efficient and effective for our residents. And I know this board shares these priorities. I look forward to discussing the budget with you on the 22nd. Next Thursday at 3:00 PM, we will be celebrating another new addition to Ansonia's Restaurant Row called The Hub, which we have been talking about. If you have seen the pictures of this new bar and restaurant, you will know that it looks beautiful inside and on the outside. Some of you may have already gone to the soft opening. I am hearing great things about The Hub, and I hope you will join me next Thursday. Please join us Sunday, this Sunday, May 19th at 2:00 PM at the annual Woodbridge Avenue Memorial. These activities are all part of our Ansonia Recharged, and there are so much more to come in the upcoming months. You may also have noticed surveyors on Main Street. We have some new renderings of what our new Main Street project will look like. Our engineers are preparing the full design for DOT's review and approval. We'd like to get this project started in the fall. You will see new sidewalks and brick pavers, new planters, trees, and other decorative items in the renderings. The plans and specifications for the new police department are just about finished. I know Chairman Heon and the Police Building Commission will soon be giving their go-ahead to advertise for contractors by the end of this month. The roof replacement will be one of the first orders of business. The focus of this administration has been on stabilizing the tax base so that increased interest and opportunities for development exist in this very challenging environment. Over the past five years, we have positioned ourselves with incentives and tools for us to attract, retain, and expand business in Ansonia. And with this board's support, that recipe has been working. We have attractive new incentives to offer interested developers that will eventually help bring Ansonia on par with some of its neighbors. We are recharging this city, and we have done so in large part with over $40 million in grant funds. That total may be higher, or there are several grants pending. Our efforts have not gone unnoticed. You will hear more about some of the grants and projects that are being proposed from our Economic Development Director. We will be meeting with the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development to talk about Rugpads, intentions to expand their current workforce from 100 to adding another 75 new employees, and to potentially add an additional 120,000 square feet of manufacturing space. You have a lease renewal for the Red Wing Pond House on your agenda tonight. As many of you know, the Red Wing Pond House has a dedicated staff and a very popular preschool program, working together with our nature center to provide an opportunity to children to engage with nature. Jackie Lima is a wonderful director, and some of you may know the head teacher, Jen Schuer. Everyone there does a wonderful job. I hope you will support the renewal of their lease with the City of Ansonia with a yes vote. That will also be the go-ahead for the Pond House to begin much-needed repairs and renovations of its structure. They will be adding to, on, a enclosed porch and new flooring, glass windows for children to observe nature indoors in the cold, in the colder months, a new heating and cooling airflow system, and a new washroom, to name a few things. It is an exciting time for the Red Wing Pond House and the Friends of the Ansonia Nature Center. You know that I have been a big proponent of regionalization, and we have been talking about this for five and a half years now. Derby and Ansonia share public works equipment, and we recently signed a shared agreement regarding the fuel pumps. We do a regional hazardous waste collection day in the valley. Our emergency services share their resources and have mutual aid. We have discussed with Seymour a number of shared services. We have a school regionalization study underway with Derby. And of course, we work closely with Executive Director, who was just here, Rick Dunn of the Nogatuck Valley Council of Governments. You know, and finally, I want to thank Rick Dunn and the Nogatuck Valley Council of Government and its consultants on this wastewater treatment study. And all those efforts will help save money and operate efficiently. Thank you, and God bless you all, and God bless the City of Ansonia.
Do you all have any questions for Mayor Cassetti? Thank you, Mayor.
Josh ain't here.
He's an item, Eric.
He's really got a question.
Corporation Council, John Marini, please.
Sure. No, no, you're first.
Just in order.
All right. Thank you, thank you, John. Thank you, President Vaccaro, members of the Ansonia Board of Aldermen. Tonight, I have a few things to talk about, but I'm gonna pass these out, these are the renderings for the Main Street Community Connectivity Project. There's two, one going northbound, one looking northbound, and one looking southbound. As the mayor mentioned, the surveyors are out there gathering information for the design of that project, which hopefully will be out in, in fall. We were contacted by the State of Connecticut regarding our opportunity zone, because the state wants to make additional investments in communities that have opportunity zones. And as you know, our Main Street was designated an opportunity zone, which has also garnered a lot of attention from developers. We have a lot of interested developers in the opportunity zone and in our Main Street, of which you will hear a little bit more about in executive session as we talk about 501 East Main Street. See, there is a development going on in Lower Main Street. You're gonna hear news about that. We're talking to the developers and the owners of a property in, in Lower Main Street. They're gonna move forward with a project that they have underway, or would like to get underway shortly. 158 Main Street and 200 Main Street are where the residential, proposed residential development is going to occur. That's before PNZ to be hopefully approved this Monday, upcoming Monday, which will bring new residential units online. We have two EPA grants that are pending, which I've talked about before, but hope to hear soon about those. And hopefully, we'll get some demolition money with those grants. And I know Chief Adamowski, former Chief Adamowski, and Captain Minns were, were talking about the easement that they're looking for, you to grant to them. But we've also spoken, Chairman Heon and PD Building Committee has also spoken about that Ivy building and a possible tear-down to create space for some parking for fire and police, so hopefully we'll, we'll get that moving as well. Bar grant is underway, so we'll have aerial photos, we'll put those up online for everyone of the Ansonia copper and brass site. And they did the structural integrity test for the bridge out on, on that property. And we're also hoping to get some additional money to complete a design for a roadway, for roadway access. Rick Dunn also has that in his long-range capital improvement plan, so that we can create a access road out to Route 8. I think that's about it. Yep, I think so. I'll come back. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Sheila. Corporation Council, John Marini.
President, members of the board, I want to clarify, the mayor is looking for a special meeting of the Board of Aldermen in conjunction with both next week on Wednesday, through the buzzer presentation. So nailing that down at this meeting would be helpful. Additionally, we do need a salary meeting to start talking about job description for our new police chief, and also an ordinance meeting to handle several items, one of which being the voting ordinance that's making its first appearance on your agenda tonight. So special meeting of the Board of Aldermen next week for the budget, and a salary and ordinance subcommittee meeting, hopefully within the next two weeks. Salary especially, if we can get to that next week, that would be very helpful. I'm pleased to report that we have two contracts resolved pending your approval. These are union contracts, one of which an up-sue contract with part-time nature center employees, and also our police union contract. And we're gonna talk about those contracts and how the negotiations went for the first time in executive session. And that's gonna be the beginning of our discussion about the details of those agreements. And we want to make sure, of course, that you provide it with all the details before you commence with a ratification vote. We're still in negotiations with the arms, part-timers. In fact, negotiation has just begun this month, and will be getting underway seriously within the next month. As the mayor mentioned, nature center, we have an extension of the Pond House lease with the Friends of the Ansonia Nature Center, fancy, that we'll talk about in executive session. And I also want to let the board know that the city is pursuing an insurance claim on Pershing Drive, and we have identified provisions in the insurance contract that would allow us to at least recover $250,000, provided we approve certain elements under the contract, and we are pursuing that. Other than that, mostly items in executive session for tonight.
Any questions for Corporation Council? Thank you, John. Greg Martin, Director of Consensual Services.
Yeah, I just, I just failed to mention that you'll see an ad in the paper for Prindle Avenue at long last, probably Thursday or Friday.
For sidewalks.
For the sidewalk project.
We talked a little bit earlier today about the long history of this project.
Yes.
It's been at least two decades.
Correct.
Trying to get this project in the works, so hopefully this is the light at the end of the tunnel.
Yep.
Hopefully, but when we see it.
Yeah, it is gonna be in the, it is gonna be in the Haven Register, so hopefully the three-week, probably a three-week period of time. So June will be awarding the bid. And out to construction in June.
July.
July. All right, July.
Thank you. Mr. Greg Martin.
Thank you, President Vaccaro. Good evening, members of the board. Couple of interesting movements going forward on a couple, and also a couple of projects that just finished up. Birthday in Ansonia was held on April 27, and we had a pretty good turnout, not quite as busy as in the past. I think a lot of it this year was with the falling of Easter holiday. But nonetheless, we still had about 30 volunteers, and we were able to clear three miles of problem streets throughout the city, and we collected about 300 pounds of paper bottles and cans. There was one other bright spot out of this. Alderman Schuer and his daughter and myself, we were focusing on West Main Street, and while we were doing all the litter pickup there, Metro North Police arrived, and were questioning us whether or not we were going onto the tracks, and he said, "No, we'd like to go over to the tracks," because there's about a 30-foot span between the tracks and the flood control wall that's literally knee-deep in litter. And he agreed that it needs, something needs to be done. And within three or four days, he sent a crew down, and they cleared literally about 100-yard stretch from the train station to the Maple Street Bridge of all the litter that was there. So that was a nice positive, and it's definitely much clearer down there for visitors coming, you know, customers for restaurants that are parking in, on West Main Street. Last Friday, Saturday, as part of the Mayor's Clean and Green Initiative, we had about, we had our third consecutive year of graffiti cleaning, and was, it was contracted by TransClean of Stratford, and removed about 75 tags throughout the city, a lot of nuisance tags, stop signs, utility poles, et cetera. And the, all the graffiti removal was funded through the Mayor's Beautification Fund, which is funded by donations from businesses. And, let's see, the last thing I have coming up, which is pretty exciting, is gonna be on June 15. We're hoping to have a, this is a tentative date right now, but an Apestone Park Colony Pond makeover celebration. Got a lot of improvements that are ongoing now, and we will be rolling it out in more detail in the coming weeks. All right? And that's, any questions?
Thanks, Greg. Kim? Kim.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Finances, busy as always. We had our van sale back on April 30th. We were able to obtain a very favorable interest rate, which is helpful. Our net interest cost was 1.79, which was very good on our notes. We're gonna be paying the expounding notes off tomorrow and receiving settlement on the new vans that were just purchased back in April. It's heading into May, toward the end of May now, and we're working on the new budget, as well as working on finalizing all of our year-end type of items. Basically looking at all the accounts, seeing if there's any problems within accounts that are either over, or they have extra funds left in them, making sure everything has been put into those expense lines that needs to be there for the end of the year. Looking towards how to find all the departments that year-end is coming, they'll need to pull out their last POs, as well as get all their final proposals for year-end, so that we'll be all set on June 30th. New fiscal year ledger will hopefully be up probably mid-July. Looking towards getting that all set up as well. Looking at items that we need to get ready for the audit, getting all bank statements scanned and uploaded, so they're all in one place, doing all kinds of analysis on accounts, all types of things that the auditor is gonna be looking for. Continuing to build our digital library, which we're finding is, probably the last two years, maybe we're working on that, it's becoming more and more helpful as other departments and the mayor and their staff is looking for information. Having it all in one place scanned and ready to go is helpful, but it takes time to accumulate the history into one place. As you know, finances undergone some staffing changes, so we're still trying to get the responsibilities in order and kind of shift things down and up, and get everybody in, on bank accounts, and having access to bank accounts, we're working on that as well. Also, we've got a meeting next week set up with the bank, looking at the credit cards that all the departments are anxiously awaiting to try to get access to, but there's some state statutes in place that we need to find, how to recruit bank, what we can do as a municipality. One of the good things that we've also done is working with the Board of Ed. We are gonna be going next week to take a look at some, three different kinds of software out there for finance packages, since our Phoenix is gonna be what they call sundown, it's gonna be going where they will not support it any longer. And we're also gonna have data to, since we're agreeing with the Board of Ed, to come together and use the same type of software and have access. So we're gonna go with them, they invited us to go down quickly to Gold Line, to take a look at three different softwares next Thursday, so look forward to that. One of the other things too, that we had a little problems with, was reconciling our ledger to their ledger. It's a pleasure to say that in the last few months, they've sent over paperwork, showed us that they're pretty much with it a couple hundred dollars, in sync with what we have. Basically, their vouchers are bouncing to ours, the problem is between their vouchers and their ledger. So they're looking for that $300, which, with their pictures, they're good and we're happy to say, working all together. Continuing to basically work on a lot of financial analysis work to try to support the mayor and the staff, as well as the other departments looking for information. I think we're doing well, transitioning, but working well.
Thank you, Kim, that was a glowing report.
Am I glowing too?
Any questions from the Aldermen? Mr. Bisher, can you add to that? I didn't think so. Thank you, Kim. Chief Cota.
Good evening, a couple of quick things. Since we last met, we investigated a serious head-on motor vehicle collision northbound at Collin Street. Speed was a factor involved among some other things, so we're still working on that. One of the drivers is still in very great condition at the hospital, so we're waiting for that as we continue through our investigation. Officer Jackson retired after 31 years of service, May 1st, so he was here for a long time, and came in and delivered his papers to us a couple of weeks ago, and he's moving on to greener pastures, down south, apparently. So I want to thank him for his service. The new vehicle we talked about is in, we're just waiting to get an install date for our parts up at the place up in Newington. Signs are ordered, Dave from Prendergast, I'm working with Bobby Evans, we're just waiting for the command, he's put the order in, we'll get that taken care of. Preparing for the Memorial Day Parade, as we do every year, along with Public Works. We're ready to go, Woodbridge Memorial this Sunday, with our officers and barricades and public works. And we continue our motor vehicle enforcement throughout the city, trouble spots, areas that we've been made aware of and/or we think are problems for us, so we continue to enforce that throughout the entire city. I'm free to answer, any questions?
Any questions for the chief? Thank you, chief. Mr. Galicia was not here this evening, is Mr. Eamon here, by any chance? No, okay. Mr. Stowe, you want to give a report for Public Works tonight, in his absence?
If anyone has any questions, I'll try to answer them, if not, move on.
Any questions for Mr. Stowe? Okay, committee reports. Finance committees are in motion to pay all bills in front of the accurate and correct. Mr. Stowe, seconded by Mr. Rivers. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Anything to report for the Finance Committee, Charlie Tynt?
Looking forward to Wednesday.
Okay. Public Works Committee, Mr. Stowe, anything to say? Not really, right?
No, thank you.
ARMS Committee, Mr. Blackwell.
I will deliver that report at next month's meeting, I do not have it this month.
Thank you. WPCA, Mr. Stowe?
Had a long lengthy presentation there. I believe that I mentioned this last month, but in case I did, the project was meant to stay the same, we didn't increase the project, right? Right, per unit. Persian Drive bill has been paid, hole has been paid, you know. Pay goodness. Yep, it's been paid. We're still looking over the bills, just to make sure everything's alright, but we've moved forward. I really don't have, you know, we have a busy schedule tonight, I, there's more I could talk about, I'm sure, but I'd like us to just proceed, if that's okay.
Thank you, Charlie. Fire Commission, Mr. Schuer in his absence, Mr. Sully?
Well, Joe is the co-chairman with that. Joe? Right here.
Total 47 calls on motor vehicle assists. Mr. President, I also want to bring up under this segment, might as well do it now rather than waiting for newer old business, the request from Eagles to utilize a portion of 65 Main Street. If it's going to be a formal agreement, and I think it should, so we can actually transfer some rights over, a right-of-way or an easement, the proper thing to do is for this board to send it right to Planning and Zoning, and they can do so this month for that 824 referral. Of course, that's the state statute that requires a referral from Planning and Zoning before this board acts, when it comes to any property rights, whether you're giving property rights or taking them.
And then addresses?
I'm sure that, you know, certainly the mayor's a full recommendation of this, and with the board's support, I'm sure, just a matter of course.
And the address is what again?
It's 65 Main Street, actually. So 65 Main Street is right adjacent to Eagle Hose, and so it's a, you know, part of that courtyard at 65 Main Street that would be utilized, that would be maintained now by Eagle Hose. And Eagle Hose, of course, is its own separate entity, so the agreement would be between the city, that on 65, and Eagle Hose.
Mr. Rivers?
Do we need to make a motion to get that?
The proper way to do this is to make a motion, and you could even, in your motion, say that you recommend this, but you need to refer it to Planning and Zoning for an 824 referral, and we could add that right onto the agenda for the next meeting.
Is there, is there a portion of the law, John?
It's a portion of the...
Do you have the parameters?
So in preparation for the presentation of Planning and Zoning, we could take the map, mark that little section out, so we define exactly what we're talking about.
I'll do that right now, make the motion to refer it to Planning and Zoning, 824 for a portion of 65 Main Street.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
I'd like to add that we're in favor of it.
Right, okay. Full of discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, John. Charlie, thank you. The Organists Committee, Mr. Yalman.
As Attorney Marini just said, I'd like to hold the meeting next Tuesday, 7 o'clock, I don't know if the members can make that, the 21st, 5/21 at 7 p.m. Hope there's a room available, we'll work with that. If it's not, we can sort of float it around.
And I believe, I believe Mr. Philip Owen's gonna schedule a meeting for salary the same night?
Same night, same time.
Yep.
Okay. Alright, okay, thank you. Housing Authority, Mr. Cassetti.
No report, they're in the, they're in the final throes of settling in at 300 Main Street. They made the move, everything went smooth. There was a little delay in the delivery of checks this month, but everything came through by the ninth. That's my report.
Thank you. Any other committees? Okay, municipal reports. Everybody reviewed the vote motions, is there any discussion on those, gentlemen, before I ask for a motion? Okay, can I ask for a motion to approve vote recommendations 1 through 6, including, and then also adding 7A and 7B? Is there a second? Mr. King? Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Land Use Department report, motion to accept their report. Mr. Rivers, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed? Motion carried. Tax collector report, request for refunds, Mr. Castellatus?
I made a motion to accept the tax collector's report request for refunds in the amount of $4,032.47, if found to be correct.
Thank you, is there a second? Mr. Yalman? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed? Motion carried. Accidents and claims? Mr. Castellatus?
Refer all accident and claims to Corporation Council.
Is there a second? Mr. Rivers, seconded by Mr. Rivers, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed? Motion carried. Communication number one? Mr. Castellatus?
I'd like to make a motion to refer to Corporation Council, and a meeting take place between Auto Repairs Unlimited and Corporation Council within a week, and to get a report, report back to the Aldermen from Corporation Council. Yes.
Is there any discussion, gentlemen? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed? Motion carried. Communication number two, Sheila O'Malley?
Yep, the Neighborhood Assistance Act, the Department of, Connecticut Department of Revenue Services requires that this board approve the applications, us submitting the applications to the Department of Revenue Services, so it requires a vote of this board. We actually have four applications, I hope you have all four. One is for the Kusatonic Boy Scouts Council, Kusatonic Council. Another project is for the library. We have a third project that we submitted, Economic Development submitted, and the fourth project is also a project at Fountain Lake for some fencing required, that the Building Department had requested for safety purposes. I'm going to in further detail, or if you have any questions about those projects. We want to get them to the Department of Revenue Services, they have a deadline for submission of projects. Those projects, then, we'll do our best to advertise those projects, get them on Facebook, put them on our page, so that interested businesses, if they, if they, if they see a project that they're interested in and want to invest, they, they will receive a tax credit up to 75% in some instances on these projects. So it's like a one-to-one exchange of investment. So these are smaller projects that they're looking to municipalities to make recommendations, anything small that isn't in the, isn't included in the budget, but you'd like, you'd like to have done, for instance, Economic Development, not that I'm plugging the project, but we're looking for money for our needs assessment for the recreational facilities and the sports, support the fields and so forth.
I'd ask for a motion to approve the applications to be sent to the Department of Revenue Services. Motion, Mr. Cassetti, seconded by Mr. Rivers. Any discussion, gentlemen?
Can I just ask one question? What is the deadline for applications?
For the Neighborhood Assistance Act? I don't know the exact date, I'll get back to you on that, but I think, you know...
We may have more of these coming.
If we have more coming, maybe at the special meeting, if we put it on the agenda, you could approve those, if it's not gonna be too late. I, I know I had, I know I wanted to get it in on the May meeting, so it's probably the end of this month.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah. Yep, I'll get, I'll get back to you with the date. Any, any other questions?
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed? Motion carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. Resolution, Resolutions Number One, City of Ansonia, Aldermen Regarding Fiscal Year 2018 State Homeland Security Grant Funding and Custodial Archibald Regional Assets and DEH, MHS? Mr. Rivers? Motion approved? Mr. Rivers? Seconded by Mr. Cassetti. Any discussion, gentlemen? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. I was just notified that I skipped over late communication number one, from the Fire Marshal. Fire Marshal's inter-local agreement. I will read this. "The inter-local agreement was an idea brought by past Seymour Fire Marshal Paul Wedewitz. The idea is based on the police department's inter-local agreement, it uses most of the same language. The intent of the agreement is to have certified fire marshals and deputy fire marshal from member towns and cities be able to assist with the fire investigation. By Connecticut general statutes, a fire marshal, deputy fire marshal, fire inspector can only legally investigate and make determinations of fire causes in cities or towns where they are sworn." "Skip to the bottom, any cost would be minimal, as such fuel and disposable items. Seymour and Derby have already approved the agreement. Oxford and Shelton are in the process of gaining approval. Bethany and Beacon Falls are in the beginning stages of getting approval. A motion to approve this? Mr. Yalman? Mr. Cassetti? Second? Any discussion, gentlemen?
Yeah, do we actually know, I mean, they said a minimum cost, but do we know about how much this is gonna cost?
No, I don't know how much it's gonna cost. Right, minimal fuel and disposable items. Any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Yalman?
I was just gonna say, just clarify, if we're approving the motion after late course of time.
Right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you.
We have late, yeah, we're on resolution two.
Resolution number two? "Or ask the Ansonia Board of Aldermen, find it necessary and appropriate to enter into a plan for mutual assistance with surrounding communities for the purpose of exchanging, furnishing, or providing fire protection and fire investigative services. Therefore, the Ansonia Board of Aldermen hereby authorizes the mayor of the City of Ansonia to duly execute the attached inter-local agreement with the town of Beacon Falls, town of Bethany, city of Derby, the town of Oxford, the town of Seymour, and the city of Shelton, and hereby adopt the recitals and provisions of said inter-local agreement into this resolution. I'd ask for a motion to approve."
I thought that's what we just did.
No. So move.
Yeah, I thought I was in second.
No, yeah, second. Any discussion?
Okay.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed? Motion carried. Resignations. I have a letter here from the Honorable Martin Dempsey, who's sitting in front of me. "Mayor Cassetti, I appreciate your confidence in appointing me to serve on the commission for the new police building. Unfortunately, due to my work schedule, I cannot make the regularly scheduled meetings on Wednesday nights. This assignment deserves someone who can dedicate the necessary amount of time to the project, and I just cannot make the commitment right now, and therefore resigning my appointment to this board, so that you may appoint an Alderman who can give it the attention it deserves. Thank you, Martin Dempsey." There must be accept?
Must be accept.
Mr. Castellatus, second. All in... All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Send him a letter to him.
Send him a letter? Thank you, Martin. Thank you, Martin. Okay, appointments. I have the mayor's letter dated May eighth, two thousand and nineteen. Assuming to my powers, under the city charter and code, I hereby submit the following appointments. For the Connecticut Regional Water District, Thomas P. Clifford III, Democrat, ten Southwestwood Road in Ansonia, Connecticut, for a term that expires June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. Their motion to approve? Mr. Yalman, seconded by Mr. Cassetti. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Conservation Commission, four-year term for Tim Holman, Republican, forty-eight Elm Street, Ansonia, Connecticut, for a term expiring June twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Castellantis and Mr. Cassetti. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed? Motion carried. Economic Development Commission for a five-year term. Jeffrey Sweeney, unaffiliated at eleven Cottage Avenue, Ansonia, to a term expiring May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Motion to approve, Mr. Rivers, seconded by Mr. Cassetti. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Michael Borjarski, Independent, forty-one Oak Ridge Drive, Bethany, Connecticut, to a term expiring May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, as a new appointment. Mr. Yalman? Mr. Rivers, seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Inland Wetlands Commission, a two-year term. Jimmy Little, it's Democrat, it's thirty-six Star Street. It's typo on here, it's just Star. It's Star, Ansonia, Connecticut, to a term expiring twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twenty, replacing Mr. Sobolinski. Motion to approve? Mr. Yalman? Mr. Castellantis, Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Jeff Gould, Democrat, ten Hull Street, Ansonia, to a term expiring twelve thirty-one, two thousand and nineteen, replacing Chuck Albia. Motion to approve, Mr. Yalman, seconded by Mr. Rivers. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Police Commissioners, to a two-year term. Peter Daniellecik, Democrat, fifteen North Street, Ansonia, Connecticut, to a term expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty. Mr. Castellantis? Mr. Tripp, Second? Any discussion? Congratulations, Peter. I should have said all in favor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Peter. Board of Public Works, to a two-year term. As an ex-official member, Charlie Stowe, Republican, twenty-three Granite Terrace, Ansonia, to a term expiring five fourteen, twenty-one. Mr. Yalman? Seconded by Mr. Rivers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you.
Out to the Recreation Commission, a two-year term. Brad Zeeler, Independent, thirty Elm Street, Ansonia, to a term expiring twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-one, replacing Mr. Smith. Mr. Rivers? Motion, Mr. Yalman, Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed? Motion carried. Ordinance. We have the Colony Pond Park, Apestone Park ordinance. We're going to schedule a meeting for.
Motion to refer that the ordinance committee will be meeting next Tuesday, seven p.m.
Motion and Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Joe. Motion carried. New, new business. I'm going to scratch the Board of Public Works secretary's salary. That should be under old business, so I'll take up that under old business. And number two, we all already discussed the renewal bids for the police vehicle repair and maintenance. So we'll go on to old business and we have a.
New business, some new business before that?
What was that?
Mr. Dempsey here had to leave that position because, you know, he had other obligations. And we have a lot of things going on in our city right now, where it's been all been putting responsibilities. And Mr. O'Brien hasn't been here for I don't know how long. Is there somebody that can get ahold of him and ask him if he could step down so we can find somebody that can be here?
Do you want to send him a letter?
Yes.
And a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second on that? Mr. Yalman? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Stowe. Any other new business? Okay, under old business, the Board of Public Works Secretary's salary, I believe that was paid, is that right, Sheila?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I have number one, under old business. We have an eight-twenty-four referral for the parking lot at five sixty Main Street.
Yes, correct. Just want to refer that to Planning and Zoning. Maybe part of a broader plan, which includes ATP Palmer and five oh one East Main Street. So we want to get our eight-twenty-four.
Mr. Yalman?
Motion to make an eight-twenty-four referral.
And Mr. Rivers, Second?
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, executive session. Mr. Murray?
Myself, Tim Rashbushara, Sheila O'Malley. And I believe a representative of Public Works was supposed to be here.
Motion to executive session. Mr. Cassetti? Mr. Yalman, Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Executive session, John, how about five minutes?
Yeah.
Five-minute break, gentlemen?